They have their own individual screen.
Yeah. And basically it's...
Okay. Uh, one is forward and one is...
Forward.
First, okay, so forward, forward, back, back. Cool.
Give it a split second for the relay.
Yeah, cool.
He's, um, he'll be behind the wizard room glass.
Cool. This is nicer than San Diego's, I'll tell you that.
Well, good.
My word.
That kind of stuff.
Ours is from 1962. They, they were about to do a $320 million building and then that got voted down. Yeah, this is really nice.
Everything is all through here as far as voting and everything. So, everything is all electronically voted. In fact, I was... We're actually bulletproof. Iced too. Come on, turn around.
Oh, we're hosting our company Christmas party and our house is in Old...
Oh, yeah, I bet.
I'm, I'm in yes-dear mode.
I'm good doing it all by myself until Ryan gets to the house and I don't know. Not much fun, so...
That misses up your vacation.
Well, it does, yeah. Well, and I have an open house Saturday, so right now my house is in one of these... It's, Christmas has exploded. Oh. You can't... How are you, Rob?
Good, how are you?
Funky things. Move your mouse. Quit touching stuff.
Don't touch it. You, you, stop touching it. Absolutely welcome, absolutely.
I'll call this meeting to order. Uh, could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Chair Porter.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Huber is noted absent tonight. Commissioner Smith is, we are still waiting for the new commissioner to be assigned. And Commissioner Kerth.
Here.
Thank you.
By me and a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Kerth. Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to freely meet to discuss issues of concern to the citizens and the city of Victorville. Grant us the wisdom to make appropriate decisions that are fair and, fair for the betterment of our community. We are truly thankful and blessed to live in a country that allows us many freedoms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Republic for which it stands, liberty and justice for all.
Do we have approval of minutes?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes.
Those minutes have been approved.
During the public hearing process and any time you wish to speak, we ask that you fill out one of these cards that are at the, at the entrance and hand it to the secretary, please, so that we can have your name and address and if we need to contact you, okay? So, the first item is a public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Item number one is a PLN 14-026 and it's a, involves a general plan amendment, a zone change and a site plan. We're requesting that the commission continue the item tonight, but before you do that, we would like to discuss with you the architecture. Uh, it's an existing building on 7th Street at 14771 or 14809 7th Street. And the building is going to be, proposed to be renovated into a number of multi-tenant different, different shops, like six different shops into what was once previously one furniture store, has been the most recent uses for the building. The, um, the renovations, uh, came through the pre-submital process that we recommend for all projects. And in that review process, we're able to give comments on a number of different things that might be issues, concerns regarding conditions of approval, infrastructure requirements, all of the different departments meet. For the planning comments, we gave a comment that the building should be revised to try and project more of a Route 66 theme that we've been trying to achieve on 7th Street, as the commission's aware of. So, we've included in your memorandum tonight, we did the packet to show you what came in on the first page as the pre-submital elevation and then what came in with the application on the site plan. And there wasn't a lot of change. They put material on the columns and they did a little bit with the awnings and added lights and a Route 66 sign. So, in our look, and if you look through the packet, what I asked for, I asked Alex to maybe send some ideas to Mr. Stino, the designer of the project, and give him just some of the elements and ideas that we're looking for to portray a Route 66 theme. And Alex even was able to sketch out the building, the proposed building, how it could achieve that look, so we provided that for you on page two. We think it does that. The, on page three was another version, um, just trying to get, show, show some ideas. And we also sent him pictures from the era, from the internet, of different buildings on Route 66 and in that era that might achieve that look. We're not trying to push any specific architecture necessarily, but just try and achieve a, a look to the building that makes you think that, oh, that kind of reminds me of Route 66, or that kind of reminds me of the 50s or 60s or 70s, or whatever it is. Uh, we, we provided you pictures of some of the buildings on 7th Street that we feel have done that with the AutoZone and the 7-Eleven and therefore, well, at this time I'll just, I'll turn it over and let you, let Mr. Stino come up and, unless you have any questions for staff.
I want him to speak during the public hearing before we continue.
Sure.
Yes.
Then I'll declare the public hearing open and...
Good evening, Madam Commissioner, Commissioners, staff. My name's Tom Stino and we've been working pretty closely with staff on this item. As you know from this, this site, we've all seen this site for the last almost 50 years it's been, there's the old Levitt's building there. We've, uh, we've compiled additional land on the east side of this to, to turn this project into something that can actually be utilized again, repurposed again. So, we got a piece of property to the northeast. Can we go back to that site by chance, or is there... The northeast corner, there's actually two pieces. You bought the very small piece that is, uh, the Water District's original piece. We got that to park it. And then the piece for the building is that, that's the old Red Cross building. Took the last, the back unused portion of that and turned that into parking also. Can we go to the site plan and show how the site plan on this works? Oh, we don't have a site plan on there?
We have it in our package.
Okay. Um, if you see in the site plan, we've, we've got, for years, what this, the problem on this project was, there's not enough parking. It was parked for the old furniture standards back in the, I guess probably the 60s when it was built, or maybe early 70s, so...
1970.
What, what year?
1970.
70? All right. Yes, been there quite a while then. Uh, so we compiled quite a bit of parking. We followed staff's recommendation and municipal code on all the parking with the standards and all of the landscape areas. To get the area in the front of the building, we had to remove the entire front of the building, that little small structure that extends out about 25 feet into the parking lot. You can see it from the graphic up top there, that, that's, that's small shaded roof in front of the building. We removed that entire front area to get this, to get this site to work the way we have it today. What happens is, there's only one row of parking in the front, and so there's, there's not enough room for two rows. Well, two rows doesn't work very well, or one row doesn't work well enough. Not to mention there's an old driveway on 7th Street that we're closing off also to clean up 7th Street. So, we've now cleaned up the front of the building by actually removing the original front of the, the structure right there and actually dropping the entire site, because I don't know if you've ever been in that store, there's about an eight, there's an 18-inch drop from the front entry down to the main level of that floor. Well, with today's ADA guidelines, you can't have any steps like that inside a building. So, we're taking that entire area off and dropping the entire front of our site down 18 inches. Okay, so it's an extensive amount of work and, um, I'm not sure if my client even understands the amount of work that he's going to be, he's going to have to pay to actually have this project done. Uh, so, everything else from the, from the project, from the, from the planning staff's standpoint is fine. Is that, is that correct at this point, besides...
Minor issues with the parking.
Okay. We, we've actually fixed those, there's just some tweaks with some landscaping and such. But now when it comes to the exterior elevations, um, we did review it with staff the first go-around and we modified that. And we've gotten to an exterior elevation now that we're, that we're, and my client is very happy with. Okay, we modified it, we wrapped them, we put a big concrete base in the bottom of those columns, we wrapped around the perimeter of those columns with a corrugated metal to, again, to evoke the theme of an earlier period. Um, you can, you can, do you have a copy of what it looks like, a street, a street view today?
Yeah, that's what I gave you.
Okay. So, there's the front, of course, and then, and of course, here's the side view from that street. And if you can see from that graphic up there, all the way along that whole eastern side, or the southern side of Desert Knolls there, we're adding windows and awnings. Yeah, that's the Desert Knolls Drive right there, right where the arrow's pointing at the site. Well, if you, if you go back to that rendering, we are, you can see it on the side of the building right there, we're putting openings and awnings across that entire site. Okay? We're painting, we're painting the, the block, it's a slumpstone block, we're painting it red to evoke again a brick type of feel, like they, not unlike what they did down at Joey's, Johnny's Radiator Automotive down on D Street, that brick feel. It's a slumpstone, so it'll, it'll be textured. Now, the issue about radius in these corners that Chris has been pushing me on, I only have 12 inches, okay? I have 12 inches out on my first pop-out, then I have another 12 inches out. To get a 12-inch radius doesn't buy me anything. The suggestions that they gave us, uh, they, they don't, we don't feel that it works with our architecture. We're very content with what we have right now. We feel we've done an awful lot to the front of this building, to the entire site as a matter of fact. He's going to spend well at excess of a million dollars to get this site to look like this and to, and to work like this. I, that's not even counting the land that he's purchased. We're putting 12-foot-high storefront, if you can see the front right there of the exterior, that glass right there is 12-foot high and it sets back inside approximately eight feet, so there's a deep recess. But I only come out past the face of my current building 24 inches, starting 12 inches at a time. The first pop-out is 12 inches, followed by the second pop-out at another 12 inches. So, to do any kind of radiusing or some, these other suggestions that staff has been asking for, uh, we're not, uh, we don't want to do it. We feel we have our design and we feel it works very well, and my client's very happy with this, and we've went to...
On the side, you're going to do a continuous awning?
Yes. Well, they recommended that because we didn't agree on the exterior elevation, so since we didn't agree on the elevations, he said, well, it's just continued then.
Well, it looks like it's only, all they're doing is requesting you to round the corners that, instead of...
That's, that's, well, that's correct.
Instead of having the angled corners, so, and you could do that?
Madam Chair, I think he's referring to continuing the item and you're talking about a continuous awning.
Oh, continuous awning on the side of the building.
Let's try, let's try that again. When you said continuation, I thought he was talking about the continuation of the meeting to January, but let's talk about the continuation of the awnings now. I don't think it's necessary to wrap that awning all the way around that corner right there, myself. What I've, what I've done, those, those awnings are actually utilitarian. They're covering the windows from shading the windows, over each of the windows. So, their suggestion of, of wrapping that as a continuous item...
Are they currently there now?
Oh, no. Oh, not at all. I'd like to show you, let me give you this photograph of what it looks like from the front, just so you have this in your possession. I'll give you all three of these. This is direct, this is actually...
Got the microphone to speak, so...
The amount of work that we're doing to this is extensive to get to this look. And to suggest that it's not enough, I feel is subjective. You know, I appreciate staff wanting to do more, but when is enough? It's, it's subjective. Does their ideas actually make that building any better than what I have here? I don't think so. Well, that's where we're at, we're at a stalemate right now between myself and staff.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay. And we'll see you back. When do we, no one will have this scheduled?
Oh, it's, it will be scheduled for January 14th, but the, what we're hoping for from the commission tonight is direction on whether they, they feel this portrays a Route 66 look or not, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Tom, while you're still there and the public hearing's open, I do have one question for you. Did you mention earlier, I was just trying to get clear, because in our, this one versus that one rendering, and there seems to be some, the rounded corners you spoke of in the, in the front, uh, elevations? Did you say it would be tough to do that because, could you say that again?
I only have a 12-inch offset.
For each of these, and those are existing, and there'd be existing walls that are there, correct?
That's correct. Yeah. So, a 12-inch radius doesn't give me much. I think it's a, looks ridiculous at that point, so it's not what we want on our building.
If you brought those pop-out elevations, would that affect your parking?
My parking, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
My parking is right there. I had to do everything I can to try to cheat this site, to make this site work right there, to get the parking to work.
Right. Tom, are you saying the spots that say lease space on them, those walls are there?
No, the back wall, and so each one of those that offsets is only 12 inches. The main wall is, the, the red wall you see, that's currently there and it goes all the way across the entire building. So, what I'm doing is I'm putting a facade in front of that right there to create a taller building and an element to it. If I didn't, if I, that whole center area where the two facades jump out there, if, once I remove the old portion of the building, you see it from the left to the, to the right, the red portion, that's currently there in a straight line, the two connect north to south. So, we've done all of that facade in front of that to try to give it a look. Otherwise, it would just connect, those two red lines there. But we, we, in closing, we like the look of our building, my client likes the look of this building, and we would like to have you approve the look of this project. We'd like to go forth with this.
Thank you.
Um, this, this, this matter of, of the look isn't part of the public hearing, is it?
Um, it's not in the sense that you're not approving any part of the public hearing tonight, you're just issuing direction to staff.
We can, we can continue this and then, and then, uh, talk about this other, about the rendering, about the facade. This item is continued to January 14th, 2015.
Did, um, but did, um, Chris, did you want us to give you some...
Yes, and that's, I think she wanted to take care of that and then, then start the discussion.
You continue, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, if I'm understanding it correctly, the proposed rendering that we have and then one of the examples, which is the one right below it, from what Tom was saying, is that there's just, there's not enough room to achieve the radiuses as they're put in here without it affecting parking of the site? Is that my understanding?
That's correct. That's what he's explaining, the, now again, that's not to meant, our design isn't meant to be the design.
No, I understand, I understand that, but I, in, in looking at what we've got before us, I, I was kind of drawn to that one. I, I like the appearance of it, but I also understand not having enough space in order to achieve the desired look. I, I get that.
That building has been vacant for years, you know?
Yes.
This would be an improvement of that entire site.
Um, I think, I think the, uh, I think the look is much, much better. I like the look, I love those windows down the side, I think this, this will work. Um, I do understand where staff's coming, coming from, even though I am not an expert, you know, architect with different design styles with the Route 66 theme and such, I do see where staff is coming from on pushing some of those elements just a little bit more. I'd be in favor of looking for a little bit more in my suggestions, my uneducated architecture suggestions, um, would be that, that I would not want to put this applicant into problems, uh, be, just because of a certain radius treatment or something like that, with the limited scope of the parking lot right there with the, with the front facade of the building. Um, maybe there's a way that the second section could be kept back a little bit and something could be rounded, but I don't think that's such a huge deal. Um, me personally, when I look at the, um, the window awnings, those eyebrow plates over top, I really like the look of those and the continue, and a suggestion of the continuous awning, um, doesn't, to me, just with this picture, doesn't make a, a big difference because, you know, but what I did notice between some of the examples and the, and the actual that the applicant have, is that above the main center section where the Route 66 sign is, that, that looks a little bit bland to me, because staff had a recommendation of kind of mimicking that awning feel such as what's over the windows. Personally, I think that would enhance, but I'm not as much worried about, you know, rounding the corners of those small pop-outs, just because I know that might be tough to fit that in where you have an existing walls and you're trying to just fur out some of the pop-out. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that bottom section under the Route 66 leasing, yeah, they've got it here. And that seems to add that. Yeah, no, I agree. Just a suggestion.
Well, is that adequate for, for you?
That, if the, I, I guess I just need you to agree that, uh, to work a little bit more, maybe on the certain, the specific area of the center of the building then?
Yeah.
And not...
That's what I noticed.
Not on the continuous, but possibly look at an awning. Rob, you mentioned the possibility of the, the two side lease space areas going back. I know that may not be possible, Tom, I understand, but, uh, if that could be recessed, then possibly make the front stand out?
I was just saying, as an option that you guys may end up discussing, if we like that curvature.
That's, that's exactly the kind of direction...
One could be set back and we could just get one curved, or since it's only 12 inches on each of them, I, I don't know if that's going to make as big a difference in my mind to get to a Route 66 theme, which I'm not, you know, clear in my mind exactly what that would be, you know, anyway, but I do know that we have been achieving that and we've seen the examples, and I thank you for showing those and that gave me a couple ideas.
The, um, yeah, I, like I said, I understand there might be limitations, I guess, just to let the commission know that the, a 12-inch pop-out wouldn't be acceptable anywhere else in the city on, for an entry feature or, you know, for a design feature on a building. I understand there's some constraints on this site, but typically we wouldn't, we would push for a, a larger feature on a building like that, so...
Especially if it was new construction?
Exactly. So, if, if that's the direction, yeah, if you just want to make a voice, voice motion that you're all comfortable with that direction to staff, that's good.
I'm comfortable with it.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, I think we, I understand.
All right.
You're going to have to meet with staff again with your plans. Okay, agenda item number two.
Thank you, Madam Chair, fellow commissioners. Item number two is case DEV 13-00005. It is an amendment to Title 16 of the Victorville Municipal Code, establishing single-family residential design guidelines and amending the development standards for single-family residential with an environmental exemption. Following our joint meeting with the city council, um, in July, this item was put to a focus group. Uh, we met in October with, uh, focus group members that comprised two of the commissioners here today, uh, two council members, uh, members from the building industry and the public. During that meeting, uh, we were able to consolidate or focus on one item at a time and what was, what was agreed upon, that we would tackle the design guidelines and development standard section, um, of the overall proposal before, uh, the lot size discussion, the much-contended lot size discussion was, uh, looked at. So, during that focus group meeting, uh, it was very productive, uh, there was a lot of, uh, discussion on the outstanding items that the building industry had some heartburn over related to the design guidelines. So, after that meeting, uh, the design guidelines were revised, um, the focus group allowed us to move forward to the planning commission. So, here we are today, uh, with, with just the design guideline and limited development standards proposal. We will look to the council, if this moves forward to the council, for direction on how they want to proceed with, uh, some of the issues with the specific plans, plan unit developments and the lot size issue. But before us today is just the design guidelines and development standards. Uh, there are four add-ons that I just want to put on the record. Our city attorney was asking to add... Our city attorney was asking to add some clarifying language, and that's one of the add-ons. It's basically giving some structure to mandatory language as opposed to permissive language. There's also two letters of support from the Building Industry Association, from Carlos Rodriguez, and then also Lewis Operating Corporation. Randall Lewis put a support letter together as well. Finally, there is a memo that pertains to the implementation, if these, if these amendments are adopted. And so following the action tonight, if it does, if your recommendation is for the council to approve these amendments, we could have some discussion on how you'd like to implement these standards, similar to the block wall standards that were imposed a couple of years back. The commission allowed developers that are currently under construction to maintain their current product type. Staff suggesting that that similar type of proposal be imposed with this code amendment. In the memo, it lists five tracts that currently have active entitlements. That's a total of 277 lots that would be excluded from this proposed code amendment. Just to give you a comparison, there's a little over 3,000 recorded lots within the city that, that are not built on at this time, so it's roughly a small number as you compare it to the overall that hasn't been developed. We are how, we are however recommending that you partially implement some of these standards on these existing tracts by requiring side and rear architectural treatment and that they abide by the landscape standards. This wouldn't require them to substantially change the current models and product type that they have currently, but it would add some quality to the current designs that are under construction. So with that, I'd like to say that staff is in support of the current proposal, and we're available if you have any questions.
Um, no, no questions.
And I will declare the public hearing open, and Mr. Carlos Rodriguez was, was the one who put in a hard for it to speak.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Wanted to first start off by saying our appreciation is extended to you, to your staff, and to the City Council for forming the focus group, and those who participated on the focus group. We appreciate your time and effort on that front and the discussions. I think were very fruitful and I think reflect the remarkable outcome that can occur when this approach, this focus group approach, is given the opportunity to really have stakeholders at the table and work in a collaborative fashion. We have said from the very beginning that we weren't supportive of status quo, and I think the design guidelines before you demonstrate that we have raised the bar to a significant level. We believe that the results coming out of these design guidelines will, will put the city of Victorville on par or better than, than any city in San Diego County, if not the island empire. And that was our intent from the, from the beginning, to, to raise the bar, to ensure that there was a quality aesthetic that would reflect the latest building trends. And we rolled up our sleeves and, and we're very serious about that, and I think before you, you see just again, a remarkable result and one that we're really proud of and that we wholeheartedly support. That said, we, we do reserve the right to comment on the exemption portion, if, if, you know, we do have some members that may not have been aware of that, and so that, that aside, we are again emphatically, wholeheartedly in support of the design guideline front. I think, again, when we were able to put aside the, the lot issue and really focus in on how you could enhance the quality of, of the current lot sizes, you see the results, and they are something that we're excited about, the Victorville market, and about the opportunity to build in the great city of Victorville. And I think we'll see for years to come, the results of the new homes that are reflected in these design guidelines will be homes that we'll, we'll all be proud of for, for generations to come. And with that, I want to wish you a happy holiday and look forward to working with you in, in 2015. Thank you.
Well, I agree, it was, you all did a very good job. Anyone else wish to speak to this item? Oh, that's why you're supposed to have the little cards.
My name is Maggie Lowe, and if I'm not in the right forum, please just let me know upfront. Mr. Borchert and I had a conversation a week or so ago, and I'm wanting to have the council revisit the municipal code ordinances for yard sale signs, and there's all kinds of debris that's being put on people's property, and I, go ahead, please.
That actually is going to be discussed on item number five, I believe.
I was looking, but I wasn't sure, so.
Item number five.
I will come back. Thank you.
Would you please? Does anyone else wish to speak to item number two? Then I'll declare the public hearing closed.
I've got a couple of comments. I think Mr. Rodriguez is absolutely right. I think this is something our city can be proud of. I do think what we've gone through here with these design standards will be, make a difference in, in our neighborhoods in the future, something that we can be proud of, similar to when we worked on the commercial design standards and the industrial, it really did make a difference and, and still today, it, it really helps. It was a productive meeting. Both Commissioner Wilson and I were on that focus group team, and it was, we, it came together amazingly, you know, quick between the building industry and staff recommendations. So I was very happy about that. There was one thing I brought up in that meeting, though, and I did want to just kind of make mention of it to the commission and address it here and, and see if it's something we should talk about. I did bring up the fact that, what if, you know, that, that a lot of homes don't have the patio covers on the back of the house, okay? Throughout Victorville. A lot do, but they're kind of add-ons, they're kind of cheap-type covers after the fact. Within this development standard document, it does say that whether a patio covers put on right from the get-go on a brand-new house, or if it's an add-on later, you know, by, by the homeowner, it will need to have, it needs to be a solid patio cover, architecturally integrated with the primary residence, including the roof pitch, the roof materials, the siding materials, whether that's stucco or siding or brick, based on the architectural style of the primary residence, okay? So that means that, that no longer in Victorville, and that's probably a good thing, no longer in Victorville will, will people be just putting up a, you know, what could be considered a, you know, lesser quality or more affordable type patio cover. So with that being known, you know, I'm wondering how many new homes will actually, after the fact, go and do this actual major add-on construction to a residence, okay? That might be kind of tough to do. I, I did bring that up, and it seemed in the meeting that, you know, that might be, you know, a little too much to ask for in the back of the house, you know, for, for design standards. So I wanted to bring that up to the, to the commission because without patio covers in the back of the house, it's pretty much just going to stay dirt, we know that, probably won't be used, and are we, in a sense, encouraging families and, and people to more utilize their front driveway, their garage, you know, where we see people barbecuing in their driveways now, because the backs are just dirt? I, I kind of wanted to get the commission to think about that, and I know that will open up a larger can of worms with, if we did mandate every house to have that, because now what, what length of the back of the house, those kind of things. Another thing that was brought up that, that I was thinking of and that Councilman McCackren brought up in that meeting, and I've talked to him once since then, and he was pretty adamant with me, and I agree with him, that at a minimum, patio covers that are representative of the architecture of the house, according to these standards, should at least be offered as an option by the builder as a minimum, in which the builder's option plans for development, it would show an option for the patio cover, what it would look like, the dimensions and style. I wanted to bring that up to the commission and see what, see what you guys thought.
Well, I think as an option, it should be available through the builder. I mean, I wish it would have been through my house, but it wasn't. But having the choice to do it or not do it, then you do leave some discretion up to the homeowner, whether or not they want it, whether they can afford it, and whether or not they want to, you know, utilize your backyard, like you said.
Utilize your backyard without shade, that's for certain, you know, and you just can't utilize it. Could we adopt what we have? Could we consider what we have before us right now and bring that back as a, as an?
You could do it that way, or you can propose language right now. It's up to you. I mean, it could be, it would be a future code amendment if we went and adopted these and then did it later.
Okay.
But, which is fine, or you can propose language tonight, that it's just a recommendation to the council.
I just, the problem is, is I just don't think that, as long as it's, it's an option to the home buyer.
At, at a minimum, yes, because if, if the developer's building the house and they given an option to say, hey, here's, here's the patio cover we can do in the back and it costs X thousand of dollars, and you add that to the, to the, to the home, the price of the home, you know, they are onsite pouring concrete at that time, they can pour the concrete for the patio, they're framing the house, they could frame the, you know, the addition, it's, you know, these days, those patio covers, the way I'm envisioning, it's part of the house, it's almost like a, a room addition without walls.
But it would cost a lot less if you do it the time that you're building the house.
Yes, and, and if a developer does not offer that, which I understand is happening, you know, quite a bit on some of the newer developments, it's not even an option, it's going to be really tough to then go start from scratch to build something so major in the future, I think, then that, in a sense, will push those people to the front, a lot of them. Bought the house and said, well, I'll put it in someday, and they never do, and then they resell the house, the next person doesn't.
I, I think that's a great idea.
Another point to think of, too, is that a lot of these rear yards face streets. You can see them from public rights away, from over the Elmad walls, you can see those patio covers, so I think Rob's point would make the city look better because the, it would be more uniformly constructed, match the house. Definitely a good point.
Could you propose some wording that we could add to this before we?
If the commission would look on page 72 of the agenda, an appropriate location may be under side and rear elevations. It could, we could add a subsection E under section two, addressed as patio covers. It could read something like, "Track developments shall provide an option for a patio cover on all dwellings," and it should be included on their stock plans.
If we're comfortable with that, that's what I was.
So do we have a motion?
I'll go ahead and. I'll make the mo, the motion as a recommendation to the City Council to find the project exempt from CEQA and move to approve resolution P-14-010, recommending City Council approval of the proposed amendments to Title 16 of the municipal code, including the patio cover language that Mr. Webb just read into the record, and also including the exemption of the 277 lots as addressed in the December 10th.
Oh, you don't need to make that part of the motion.
Oh, I don't do that?
Yeah.
Okay. What about when you talked about the rear and side and landscape standard?
We'd like to talk about that separately.
Okay.
Go ahead and do the, do your motion.
That motion with Mr. Webb's patio language, along with all conditions.
Just to clarify, would that include the additional language from the city attorney in the memo?
Yes, that would, thank you.
I'll, I'll second that.
Now, if you'd like to move, move on direction for the, for a policy on when we implement it, that would be fine as well. And again, I know Carlos spoke about have the builders having concern, and I think it's good to point out that when the code goes into effect, it should be effective right then for every lot that doesn't have a building permit on it currently, when that code is adopted, it should then be required to comply with the, those guidelines. We came up with this proposal, similar to the block wall standards, when that hit, because builders have their financing, we understand that, you have your, your plans, you have your thoughts on how much it's going to cost to build, and therefore, we didn't want to impact that too much, and that was the, the logic during the block wall discussion as well. So builders were allowed to finish current, current develops that they had going without implementing block walls because of the cost increase. So we're saying the same thing here. They can finish, but we would like to them to add some of the foam pop-outs around the windows, shutters or something like that, whatever the architecture has in the front, to the sides and the rear, and also then the landscaping, the landscaping standards that are going to be in place at the time are going to be beefed up a little bit, they're better defined on how much landscaping you need, how many plants, things like that. So we would ask that those be required as well.
I'm in agreement with that. Do we need to make a motion?
Direction and motion that that be the policy would be great.
I'll just finish it up and, and make the motion that.
Separate motion.
Yeah, separate motion that I'm in agreement with regarding the December 10th, 2014 memo from Chris Borchert, in agreement that the notated 277 lots would be exempt, taking into consideration that they would, the staff would still, staff would still work on the side and rear design standards of the house, along with the landscaping standards on those 277.
A verbal vote?
Oh, okay.
I'll go ahead and second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. The next item is public comments on planning matters. In compliance with the Brown Act, it is necessary for the planning commission to make available time for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of interest that fall within the planning commission's subject matter jurisdiction. If you wish to speak on this item, please limit the length of your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to speak under public comments? New business. Deemed approval, approved alcohol workshop.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to give a brief history on how we brought up the topic of this workshop tonight. During our most recent update to our municipal code, where we tackled an update to our alcohol standards, there was some members of the community, they have a group called the High Desert Community Coalition, and part of what they're trying to do is tackle some of the youth problems. They're also involved with the spice. youth problems, they're also involved with the spice ordinance that just went forward, the synthetic drug ordinance, and they brought up a point when we were tackling our alcohol ordinance, that it lacked a deemed approved section, and what the deemed approved section would do would tackle these existing establishments that are a nuisance. And during our past workshops on the alcohol topic, we realized that a lot of our census tracts are are over-concentrated. What a deemed approved ordinance would do would give the city some more teeth in how we regulate these existing establishments. So with that, I want to hand it over to Anthony Wagner, he's with the Institute of Public Strategies. He has a twenty-minute presentation tonight to get the commission and staff up to speed on what the deemed approved ordinance is all about. He's done a lot of work in San Diego County on this topic, and I'll hand it off to you. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Happy to be here, I'll get right into it to be cognizant of your time, but basically think of this workshop as creating a tool belt to abate some of your nuisance-related activity. Like yourself, I'm a planning commissioner in the city of San Diego, but my expertise is alcohol licenses and state and municipal regulations that go with that. I work for the Institute for Public Strategies, and we use this particular model to your right in order to abate crime violence and nuisance-related activity through applied data and research, media advocacy enforcement, policy development, and community organizing, and a lot of the community members are here this evening. So let's get into the research. The research in California shows that the number, the density, the location, the operational practices inside the business of these alcohol outlets contribute to violence, your drinking and driving incidents, your injuries, underage drinking, and overall nuisance-related activity. But think of that also as a tax on your resources here at the city, so a disproportionate demand on city services absolutely correlates to the the bottom line of your general fund. So let's get into what some of those nuisances look like, and you can see whether or not that meets some of the things that are happening in your community. Throughout California, some of the nuisances include graffiti, loitering, drug sales, we have chronic homelessness, alcoholic, chronic alcoholic homeless population, or the serial inebriates, and then public drinking. Another list of common nuisance activities that are happening in and around these licensed establishments include urinating in public, petty theft, panhandling, drinking in public, domestic violence, assaults, and sales to minors as well. So getting into some of the pictures of what some of the worst of the worst offenders look like that have alcohol licenses, here you very clearly show that they're not meeting Business and Professions Code for having only thirty-three percent of their window space be available for police to get in there and to be able to see. You have a whole bunch of trash, and then graffiti as well. And just think about nuisance-related activities don't have to be inside or near the establishment, they can permeate a bit distance away from these alcohol establishments as well, and still, the alcohol establishment's responsible for that disproportionate contribution to nuisance-related activity. Here you see another one, the payphones really seem to be a problem. I believe that your land use development calls, your land use development code probably calls out payphones for new establishments, but existing establishments, they're a haven or what I call a nuisance attractant for crime and public health challenges. Another thing that's common throughout municipalities in Southern California is including within their land use conditions, a condition to have proper landscaping, proper landscaping, proper lighting. Once again, you see that this particular establishment is not doing their best to fit in with the community, and sweep up and have the proper signage, and really be a nuisance attractant as well with the trash, it's kind of like the broken window theory, once a window is broken and you don't fix it, you know, it leads to more challenges within the community. Replace the window for trash and graffiti, it's it's and it's an attractant to bring more on. So this is National City in California, and this really calls out existing licenses, alcohol licenses, in correlation to police calls for service. You see your red hotspots are police calls for service in the city of National City, and overlaid on top of the highest calls for service are those alcohol licenses. Once again, those particular licenses are disproportionately contributing to nuisance activity. Yes, ma'am?
Are those on sale licenses?
Those are off-sale, off-sale licenses. So, you know, and I'll, I will get into this, but communities usually have two types, one or two types of problems. Your off-sale locations usually are a serial inebriate activity, or maybe your young people drinking in and around that establishment, or doing your beer runs for your off-sale establishments. And then your on-sale establishments usually are restaurants that morph into a nightclub and cause noise and trash, and a lot of it pertains to the bar break. So, for example, in San Diego City, San Diego, Pacific Beach is the nightlife area, and that's the on-sale problem, to where the city of Alcohoan has a serial inebriate problem on some of their main corridors, and that would be an off-sale problem. So let's delve into that. So Victorville has ninety-six on-sale establishments, inclusive of your restaurants, nightclubs, and bars, and they also have ninety-two off-sale establishments, which are your grocery stores, your liquor stores, your neighborhood markets, and your gas stations. Like I said, not all problems are created equal. Some municipalities only legislate or provide conditions for their off-sale establishments because that's their problem, or the municipality would only do on-sale. Some municipalities do both. But think of the deemed approved ordinance tool belt to be one or the other, or potentially both. So that gets us into, you know, what is within the purview of the state and what's in the purview of the municipality? Well, it turns out, anything related to sales of alcohol is within the jurisdiction of the state, but the Business and Professions Code that regulates the Alcohol Beverage Control Act carves out space for a municipality to use their police powers to ensure that a license does not disproportionately contribute to nuisance-related activity. And many municipalities have permitted uses, whether that be ministerial, or working our way up to discretionary through a conditional use permit process, and then probably at the top of the most intensive municipal control would be a deemed approved ordinance. So the great thing is that you looking into bolstering your land development code fits well within your two thousand seventeen strategic plan. You know, a deemed approved ordinance would and could provide for a safer community. Most municipalities throughout California have robust public support, it provides for better and higher-paying jobs, a better infusion into economic development, prettier, cleaner community with a pride of ownership, and then fiscal strength as a city, because you're attracting other like-minded establishments. If you look at your current land use development code, just in October, you did in fact modify your alcohol sales regulation citywide, but that only affected new licenses coming in. So what do you do about, you know, the existing licenses? So going back for just a moment, you changed your land use development code to be all-inclusive with zone, business size, distance, beverage size, and quantity sold. Beverage size pertains to how large the the size of the drink is, that oftentimes you have the forty-ounce drinks or the airplane bottles, and then quantity sold with your single-serve beverage ordinance that you put through. Oftentimes retailers are getting around that by serving in triplets or serving in twos. The main thing that you can think of to abate a public health challenge is price point. The higher the price point of the beverage, the least likely it is to contribute, disproportionately contribute to that nuisance-related activity. So the challenge that we're speaking about tonight is, what do you do with those pre-existing alcohol establishments that are legally non-conforming with your current land use development code? You know, those outlets were established prior to you changing your zoning code, both for off-sale and on-sale, so they currently don't have to abide by those conditional use permit standards that you set forth. So bringing those particular outlets into compliance was already looked at by about twenty-five different municipalities. So the exciting thing is, is municipalities in the here and now don't have to reinvent the wheel. It was expensive for city staff and city attorneys around California to be able to be the first ones to do this, but now you can extract the best practices and the language that currently exists in these major metropolitan areas, as well as small city sizes. Now, I sent three handouts to you, I just want to make sure that the hand, it was important to me that the handouts that I gave you were in color, so I just want to make sure they're in color, because they're a whole lot easier to navigate if they are in color. So if you can give that to staff, they can take that with them. As you see that in this particular handout, let me, so in this particular handout where there's a matrix, it's color-coded, and you can see what the different municipalities have done that have the best practices, and the clerk will pass that out, so you have a colored version. And it's it's important to note that if you don't want to be compared to a major metropolitan area, there are many small cities of your size that have chosen to go for, go forth with the deemed approved route, that have about the same alcohol licenses that you have on-sale and off-sale. So a deemed approved ordinance regulates those existing non-conforming uses known as those grandfather establishments. The real benefits of deemed approved are increases your local control, especially at the planning level, it helps to reduce crime, improves the quality of life, promotes a healthy business environment, so let's get into how it actually works. The deemed approved program provides for performance standards, those performance standards are embedded within your land use development code, that usually calls out a list of nuisance activity, that nuisance activity can include your disturbing of the peace, your drug activity, your street drinking or drunkenness, loitering, harassment, vandalism, graffiti, excessive littering, public urination, theft, assaults, all of those nuisance-related activities, including the ones that are especially important to you as the commissioners. So here's how it works, that nuisance list would be embedded within your performance standards section within the deemed approved ordinance in your land use development code. Those pre-existing retailers must abide by these standards in order to maintain their permit. A violation of the performance standard would allow the city to conduct a proceeding to revoke or to modify those once-on-a-time legally non-conforming uses that the owner previously had. So this is what it would look like, sort of in a flow chart. A complaint would be received, and that either would be from citizens, or city staff, or code compliance, or your sheriff's department. That complaint would be verified by city staff to ensure that it met the criteria violating your municipal code. One thing that's unique with the city of San Luis Obispo is they provide sort of a stopgap for business, to where a violation is called out, that business goes before the business association, and they try their best to hammer out a solution. Now, if that doesn't work, it goes to an administrative hearing, either to your hearing officer or to the planning commission, and the goal is not to be punitive, the goal is to ensure compliance or to provide conditions that would abate the previous nuisance-related activity. So the benefit of the DAO, of course, is that you have control, it's potentially self-funded, and we'll get into that, that we don't have to get into your general fund dollars, you decrease your sales to minors, you hold the owner responsible, there's a fast appeal process, that's important for business to feel like they're within the partnership, and there absolutely is a demonstrated reduction in the demand on city services, and that sometimes can be hundreds of thousands of dollars to your city, just in reduction in demand. For business, you have a partnership, not only with city staff, but with the law enforcement that goes out there on a regular basis. That officer that monitors that works with the business entities to ensure that they are compliant and that they're not punitive. It's not important to be punitive, it's important to gain compliance. You decrease that risk, your insurance premiums are lower, and there's a reduction of risk and liability, and then an increase of public health and safety, not only for the business owner, but for the consumer and then the neighborhood around there. So a lot of times I get of these twenty-five municipalities, business owners are deathly afraid that it's going to shut down their business, so I actually studied that, because it was important that we had buy-in from the business community, and oftentimes they say, well, this is going to affect my ability to operate. So I took the the top sixteen municipalities throughout California that had a deemed approved ordinance in place, and of that, you think about, all those municipalities have about seventy-three hundred licenses, and of those seventy-three licenses, of those seventy-three hundred licenses, only four had their land use rights revoked or suspended, and it's important to note of those seventy-three hundred licenses, I think, let me see here, two were suspended only for a brief period of time, and the other ones had their, the other two had their conditions completely revoked. What happened in that process is the city was able to work with the violator to ensure compliance, to renegotiate conditions, and to ensure that that business entity maintained their profitability. So as I said, it absolutely is a partnership between the community, the retailer, and enforcement. The key to success would be the enforcement, but just as important as enforcement would be education, and that education element usually comes from the alcohol licensing officer that would monitor this, and I can't tell you how important it is to have a fee structure available. At least nine municipalities, including some the same size as yours, have put a fee structure in place to ensure that this program is working into perpetuity, regardless of what land use practices are important to city staff, or the ideology of planning staff, or, excuse me, planning commissioners, or city council. A self-sustaining program is very important to abate your nuisances long into the future. So duties of an alcohol licensing officer, an alcohol licensing officer usually would be your, one of your sheriffs, and it's important to get a alcohol licensing officer that has the tact to work with the business community, to provide those solution-oriented things that need to happen to abate, you know, nuisances. They do inspections, they do the bar checks, they do education, which is some sort of training to ensure that the business owner is not disproportionately contributing to some of those challenges, which would be maybe service to minors, or making sure that their security cameras are working appropriately, or they don't put their beer up to the front of the store where it would be a part of some beer runs, or potentially have alcohol locks on the coolers when they're not supposed to be selling. So these are some of the things that the enforcement officer does. So these are some of the things that the enforcement officer does. The programs also include the minor decoy and the shoulder taps. And then training. Training is very important. The business community absolutely appreciates the training because they don't want to run afoul of the law anyway. So this is a quick look at Ventura. Ventura implemented their deemed-approved ordinance in 2004, and this is a look at their police calls for service. It's interesting to note that in 2005, the police calls for service went up, but that's directly related to the relationship that the police department had with the business owner. The business owner felt that they were able to call and have it not be held against them. So it really was a partnership that led to that particular uptick. And then as you see from 2006 to 2007, the calls went down in a statistically significant way. Think about a police call for service is about eighty to ninety dollars to go out. You think about the vehicle cost or the police cost, the reporting cost. So all of these things, every one of those calls is about eighty bucks. So Roanoke Park, which is about the same size as yourself, has a fee structure. Their fee structure is according to risk, hours of operation, volume, and then police calls for service. They are about, let's see, you can go to your color copy and you can see the nine different municipalities that have a fee structure, inclusive of Roanoke Park. This is Ventura's alcohol fee schedule. They're somewhere between two-hundred-and-fifty to seventeen-hundred dollars annually. They're, once again, according to risk, hours of operation, and how much is sold. So this gives you a perspective to fund an alcohol licensing officer. It's right around a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars plus, and with the amount of licenses you have, it's a fee that's probably not going to put your business out of business, and especially when you put the overlay of the education, the alcohol enforcement officer, and leveling the playing field. Many businesses report that they're actually appreciative of the program. So I'm going to wrap up and then we can go into questions. This is a before and after in Oakland. Oakland, by the way, has a deemed-approved ordinance that also goes along with their alcohol and their tobacco retailers. So a deemed-approved ordinance could work for alcohol, tobacco, or other dispensary types. This is a before and after in Ventura. Right there, they're in violation of their thirty-three percent on their windows. And then another nuisance attractant would be the propane tank holder. You can hide stuff behind there, you know, would be a part of drug sales or something like that, so they were able to remove that, and this is the after. Once again, city of Ventura, y'all may be familiar with crime prevention through environmental design standards that either the police department uses or your planning staff uses. This is a perfect example of septeding a building. Once again, the trash receptacles are a nuisance attractant, so getting rid of those and then providing lighting, as you see in the next picture, it really promotes a healthier environment that people don't want to necessarily be around that because of the new lights that are up and just because it is so much cleaner. And that leads me to your questions, should you have any? But I'm grateful for your time and happy to answer anything you might have specific about the deemed-approved ordinance.
Just kind of wondering, as you were speaking about, you know, the ordinance aspect, how would that differ from the typical nuisance, you know, ordinances that we might already have in our municipal code with those ordinances and, you know, the grandfathered-in, you know, alcohol off-sales, pretty much most of those are going to have C U Ps on them from even back in the day, you know, that says any negative effects to this can bring it back, you know, to the city. Where's the correlation that the deemed-approved ordinance fill that gap from the ordinances we already have?
The first deemed-approved ordinance was established in nineteen ninety-three, and then that was actually constitutionally tested as a sound way for municipality to govern a nuisance problem, especially with an alcohol-licensed establishment. So there is case law that this particular way that many different municipalities have been doing it is the best way forward that's constitutionally tested with the least amount of people being able to chip away at it. I'm not familiar with your specific land use development code pertaining to other nuisances outside of your alcohol beverage establishments, but this creates a space for an appeals process and a hearing officer and navigates a beginning-to-end way of solving your problem.
So that's a lot of it when you explained to us that it was, there's more components to it before it's just, hey, you get the letter in the mail, come visit City Hall.
Yeah, and it's important that there is due process. It's important there's due process in order to, in order for the integrity of the whole program to work and in order to have everyone feel like they're getting a fair shake.
You know, what's the timeframe for, like, noticing out to businesses that adoption would be some, like, if the city was going to move forward with this, would be a recommendation to city council, city council will put it out there, and then what is it, usually like a six-month lead we give people, three-month lead?
Yeah, I'll tell you how it's worked in the past with many different municipalities. It's not something that just all of a sudden happens. In order for your deemed-approved ordinance to work, it has to have buy-in from the business community, has to have buy-in from public health, it has to have buy-in from your city attorney, from city staff, and it also has to have buy-in from your sheriff's department. But don't underestimate the need for business to fully understand what's happening and support it in the future. I think a lot happens when something goes forward so fast, people don't have enough time to fully understand what the ramifications or the lack thereof of a new ordinance would be. But going back just historically with many other municipalities, what normally happens is there's a problem, the problem is identified, you have the business community that says, "No, we don't want to have any sort of new regulation or new ordinance, we're going to solve this problem on our own." They work diligently as a business association to accomplish that, and then sort of falls off the wayside, and then a year or two years later, you still have the same challenges, and then the city is able to act in unison. That usually is the evolution of what has happened in about ninety percent of your municipalities to where it's a slow evolution or building up to, okay, this is what we're going to do, this is our definitive answer, and this is how we're going to do it. Usually, your biggest challenges as a municipality would be implementing a fee structure to make it self-sustaining. I would tell you that a deemed-approved ordinance probably would not work very well unless you have a sustainable mechanism of an alcohol licensing officer, an education component, and buy-in from the business. And I'll leave it at that.
Does the alcoholic beverage control, do they have the wherewithal to pull a license?
Yes, ma'am, of course.
Based upon complaints, maybe from the city or?
Yes, ma'am. I'll tell you, your geography is not much different than the city or county of San Diego. Usually, four alcohol-licensed officers with the alcohol beverage control are responsible for probably about seventy-three hundred licenses, so they usually abate the worst of the worst offenders, but that's few and far between. Normally, it pertains to drug activity or illicit activity that's happening in and around the establishment, but your nuisances that directly affect the aesthetics, the community character, and the quality of life, there needs to be an avenue for local control. And I will tell you that your sheriff's department can, in fact, enforce a business and professions code, but oftentimes the business and professions code is so cumbersome that you really take an alcohol-licensed expert in order to understand what is a violation of the business and professions code at the state level and then what's a violation of your municipal code. It's always nice to rely on your boots on the ground that live here, that work here, that are part of the community to be able to solve the problem, and that's what a local control brings you. I would tell you that the alcohol beverage control is an enterprise fund, so they're as large as the fees that come in from alcohol-licensed establishments. That has not changed in a really long time. From two thousand and eight to present, they're about half the alcohol licensing officers that there once were. I would tell you, and I would say that the alcohol beverage control would agree with me, that they're sorely understaffed, so it's within your best interest to give some of that local control to your decision-makers here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it, and thank you to city staff, and thank you fellow commissioners. And I guess I would say if you have any questions in the future, please feel free to give me a call and I will get you the answer or work with Scott to ensure you have everything that you need. Thanks again.
Thank you. That might have helped us a few months ago.
Yep.
If it had been in place. Agenda item number four is on non-conforming sites and uses.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission? Yes, we wanted to bring this up and discuss it because there seems to be a little bit of an issue if we're trying to clean up the city that, and we're trying to look for better quality developments, even with the existing ones or the new ones that come in. There's a problem with our codes when it comes to non-conforming and whether they're non-conforming sites or non-conforming uses. A business can come in and if the use has been there operating previously, we just give them another business license, even though a new owner might come in and he might change things around and things like that, we just give them a business license and let them go because our code says that if they're not changing anything or don't need a new approval or it hasn't been twenty years since the code changed or something, then we let them go. And to me, it seems like an issue, and we put those pictures in the report. Those two are two bar locations on Palmdale Road, but Scott also has one to pass out to you that's on Seventh Street. And you can see what the issues there are just by these pictures. The one on the second page, on page three of six, that business came in and did a tenant improvement plan on the inside of the building, got building permits, and no requirements are done to the outside, the exterior of the building, because it was always been used as a bar. And it, there's just something wrong with that. In fact, I got mad at staff for letting that go before they pointed out that, well, there's, the code says we don't do anything, so it's hard to believe that someone can run a business with a parking lot that looks like that with no striping, no handicap accessibility. And I guess the city's not, you know, it's not the city's, we're not going to get sued if he gets sued for handicap accessibility, it's his problem, but that's not right. You shouldn't be able to run a business. If you go to run, open a business and run a business in the city, you should understand that there's going to be an investment that you need to make. There might, this might cost you some money. So to just allow businesses like this that don't comply doesn't seem right. So like I said, we're looking for just some direction tonight on whether you think it's appropriate to look at a code amendment to the non-conforming section and what other issues you guys might see. The one on Seventh Street, you can see, it's hard, I don't know, Scott, if we ever found out, were there any approved site plans on this project or?
I wasn't able to discover any in records. I mean, it's been there for a long time.
What's that cross?
Seventh and Yucca, northwest corner.
Kind of heading up towards the high school, is that where, or no, no. This is still down a little ways, isn't it?
It's closer, it's closer to the, yeah, it's across the junior high, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I drive by it, I look at it, but I don't know exactly.
In what kind of business is it?
It's vacant right now.
The sign says "keep."
What brought it up is that we had, we had someone that wanted to do a pawn shop there. That use isn't permitted, but it brought up, brought up to our attention that this site is vacant and we probably will get another user requesting to occupy it within the coming months. So looking at the site, we realize there's a laundry list of non-conformities and we kind of want to get direction on how far we push the property owner to bring it up to code, whether it's just general maintenance, whether it's installing some landscape planners, trash enclosures. It's a wide spectrum of non-conformities and it's kind of hard to pinpoint where we start.
Even trash enclosures are really important because that's how, we've got prevailing winds. And you can see even in some of the commercial areas where they leave the tofts off along the back of the, where they have the, where the fairgrounds is, and then they, right across the street from that, it's always trashy there, it just looks awful. So I, in my opinion, that the minute that you change ownership or the minute that something changes that's significant, that's when we could make it come into compliance. Otherwise, I, otherwise we'll never have everything looking spigot-span, I don't think.
I agree, I agree. Very tough. Yes, she, well, Roberts, one, she needs to recognize you, two, you would need to come up to the microphone so we can get your comments, but.
Well, this is Porter. My name's Robert Herrmann. Hey, guys. It's my understanding that it doesn't need to change ownership, just a new tenant would be, have to be in compliance with ADA as far as the handicap accessibility, isn't that correct?
No, there's provisions in the building code that say if the, for existing sites, they don't, I mean, technically, you're right, the property owner should want to change it, but the city's ability to tell them they have to, no.
Well, I've been doing handicap ramps lately, and they, the owners must be requiring the new tenant to bring the loca, so that's actually between the owner and the tenant.
It could be, or the owner should do it in case he, if he's just leasing the building, sure.
Right, because I just did one recently for a check cashing place at the old Autozone. And that one was, I was under the impression the city made that guy do that.
If they're coming in for an approval, a conditional use permit or interim use permit or something, then we can, we can make them do things.
I think it's a good thing, you know.
Oh, yeah, no.
And I'm not speaking to that as a business guy who loves to do handicap ramps, but the new, the old supermarket on Palmdale and El Evado is now a indoor swap meet, or should I say the drugstore that was right there? They contacted me and told me the same thing, that the city was making them bring the whole front of the building ADA compliant in the same manner as Costco is with the truncated domes all the way across the front of the building.
The issue with it, Chris was talking about, is that the city doesn't have leverage if someone's just coming in and occupying a prior building without doing improvements. The moment they try to do even interior improvements to the site, the building code requires them to allocate a certain percentage of those improvement costs to ADA accessible improvements.
Okay.
So it is, the city does have leverage when they come in for improvements, but if they don't come in for improvements.
Or approvals.
Or approvals, yeah, they don't, the city doesn't have.
I'm just using ADA compliance as an example, but so in essence, pulling a permit of any type would then enable the city.
No, not necessarily just a building permit, but a conditional use permit, yes, we would, and that's kind of what we're trying, we're trying to do, the one on Seventh Street, we're trying to put together a list of things for the property owner to understand that if a new business comes in here or a conditional use permit is required, that the things that we're going to require will be required. And that's what we're talking, a trash enclosure or something. Now, that, the size of that business may not warrant, you know, a trash enclosure, it might, can service may work just fine for that scale of a business, but some businesses, the bars, obviously would probably need.
But if it was creating a nuisance, we could use our nuisance ordinance and we could But if it was creating a nuisance, we could use our nuisance ordinance and we could use our, we could use our code enforcement, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's all a good thing. I mean, you know, the, the old Suzuki car dealership on Ramona just was reoccupied by Mitsubishi. And I did a trash enclosure for him and I had to listen to him for two weeks complain about the cost of that, which is extravagant, but I agree that that type of thing, just as the gentleman was here earlier, trash bins exposed are definitely a nuisance and ugly.
Well, they're more than that because of the winds, so.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you guys.
Oh, so what?
Well, based on what I see, I'm favoring the partial enforcement. Reason me, I, personally, I think the, to hit somebody with a full enforcement would be potentially extremely expensive, I mean, we're not supposed to take that into consideration, but business-wise, I think that it, that in this particular instance, it should be a consideration, because you'd hate to lose the business, to potentially lose the business, you know, it's going to cost them a hundred thousand or, you know, half a million dollars to bring it up to whatever the current codes are. But I do agree that a partial enforcement of some, of things, you know, some items should be.
And I think we've been pretty good at being able to do that along the way.
Yeah.
I would, I guess.
You know, I, I look at this house right here and, you know, you look at, well, what used to be a yard, what was the original driveway and what it's now, has, what it's turned into, but yet, if you were trying to try to make this place fully compliant, it would sit vacant forever. Nothing would ever, you couldn't, the cost would be prohibitive to make it a viable business. But yet, I believe you could do some partial, you know, enforcement on, you said trash enclosure, some type of potential landscaping over, paint the concrete green or something.
Yeah, I would, I would think that the, it would be aesthetics would be, I, I would think that that would only need can service, so a trash enclosure would be a good one not to do the, but aesthetics, trying to improve the look from the street.
Did you say paint the concrete green?
I said paint the concrete, we're in a drought.
That's awesome.
We are in a drought.
You know, I was just, I was just headed that way too.
Is that property?
Bob, I think a good point maybe to bring up that Roberts headed for is, is it better to have a business in there, in that area, in a small building like that, that's probably not going to succeed?
Probably not.
And is it better to have them there for a little while, or is it better to, to not, to call it nonconforming and to require them?
Because we just got this, but, you know, looking at the pictures of the bar, the two bars, is, there's definitely room for improvement, you know, lighting, striping, asphalt, things like that.
Outdoor lines.
But, you know, and going back to the, not to bring it up too much more, but the, that Seventh Street and the decision on the architecture is tough too, because is it better to have a building that had the look that it had before and is fine, it has trouble, yeah, we know, is it not, or is it better to say, yeah, let's get some improvement and somebody to renovate it? That building's been there for 44 years, looking like that, and, and, you know, to think that we could change it and he might be willing to renovate the elevations and we're going to have that building for another 44 years, is that the building, is that the design and everything that you want for the next 44, you know, so, important to keep that in mind, you know, what is, what's the best for the city? It's still on a bad corner, it's still in Old Town, you know, hopefully we can renovate Old Town and the Seventh Street, hold the whole strip to make it better for businesses in the future. And it does seem to have a bit of a renovation going, but we don't want to hurt that either, so we don't, so.
Right.
Right.
I, I agree with him. Um, I agree with him. That the partial enforcement is what I would go along with.
Okay, and then that's, that's only talking about the sites, the nonconforming sites, then we, on the next page, you have nonconforming uses, and that's what I'm talking about where the bar, a bar goes in for a bar. And if that use, if that use now requires a conditional use permit, we don't require them to come in for a conditional use permit because it's always been a bar. But yet, we're missing that opportunity to then apply conditions of approval that they should have to comply with, like every other alcohol establishment. So nonconforming uses, there's on, on the following page, there are some options for that on page six.
Chris, does that mean, nonconforming uses mean they, they're a bar, but it's been there so long, they don't have a CUP?
Exactly.
They just have an alcohol license?
Until, I think the 1990s, bars were permitted, just, just need a business license in the city of Victorville, I think until the early 1990s, I'm not sure on that, but for the longest time, bars were just permitted. So when we changed them to require a conditional use permit, any bar that's been there, if somebody moves in within 90 days or six months, or what it used to be six months, I think, if they move in, in that time period after that business moved out, they just go in and use that same look?
So on both of these, on the, on the site and, and the individual use, I mean, do you have any idea how many we're talking about? I know there's a lot of nonconforming stuff around the city, but when it comes to the commercial boulevards, are there really any hot pockets, are there any, I mean, how many would this affect? But let's say, for example, we went hardcore and said, tomorrow morning, all nonconforming, who's going to get a notice? How many?
Wow, every automotive repair shop in C2, every church outside of C1.
So that's nonconforming use for the zoning, but not?
Oh, you have plenty of time.
And I'm not saying we should, I'm just saying that's, that's kind of what we're dealing with. And so every, if we don't want automotive repair in C2 or whatever, then we need to quit approving it. But yet, some of those buildings were built strictly for automotive repair, so that's where we have the interim use permit, you know, that goes, which would be good if they're not, if there's some reason they're not conforming as a use, or we need better conditions of approval or something, it would be good to then tell somebody, no, you can't go in under their conditional use permit, we need to redo it, or something like that, because it is nonconforming and we haven't looked at it in 10 years and 20 years.
I don't think conditional use permits could, should, I think they should stop with any change, change of ownership or change of, of use, or, or even any change.
Unfortunately, state law on a, you can probably condition that, I imagine if then they accept that, but a conditional use permit by state law runs with the land. So if we, unless you don't set a timeframe of approval or a condition that says this permit expires with the owner, unless you don't specifically condition that, it runs forever. Yeah.
I was looking at the, you know, the partial enforcement, for me, at first, I was thinking, you know, that's, that's a way to kind of catch up. That's a way to start to get there, give more flexibility, but then where do we draw the lines? I'm, I'm looking at, you know, your, I think your best examples are those two little bars on Palmdale Road out there. I mean, those are clearly, they don't have any parking lot, you know, there's no landscaping, there's nothing, but that's very similar to the vacant expanse of dirt all around them anyways. The, the one that says no change would still leave us that if that bar came in and said, I want a building permit, I want to add on a, something on the side of the building, I want to go put, do something, anytime you come to the city and ask for something, the city's always going to ask for something back. And that could be a building permit, a conditional use permit, an IUP, right?
If they came in for a building permit of any kind, it would, wouldn't it trigger a?
You know, that one had, the officina had a building permit and no other improvements were required.
How long ago?
Six months.
Was it real minor, was it something just like super minor, do you know, or?
It was.
Less than $5,000.
The TIs, it was a TI improvements, yeah. And that's the other thing, I think, that was the amount that you spend, if it's less than $20,000, then you don't apply.
I thought it was $5,000.
Because, I mean, these buildings are about done.
Call it back, when you were a city clerk, it probably was.
It probably was.
These buildings are about done, okay? The one on, on Old Town, could stay there a long time, and that's, it's like a house, but these, these are about done. And Palmdale Road, in my opinion, is going to be the next to develop out, okay, in our city. What happens, these usually, they either burn down, the owner changes the use or wants to do something that forces them to upgrade, but I doubt that building owner, and I know one of the building owners, I doubt they're going to upgrade, because they know the next cycle is going to be larger retail coming, the property value's going to be so much more than that little shack that's sitting on there. You know, and to go get these guys to, to do all of this right now, when it's just almost like it's in its last dying breaths possibly, on the other hand, yes, Chris, they, Scott, they could be there for another 15 years, just exactly how they are, but.
Longer.
But it's been 40 years like that, so.
But they, but they need to do so.
What scares me is if, if a nicer development came down the path, and you've, we've all seen those war stories on TV where that little one held out, you know what I mean? And a nice development came around it, but I don't see that happening. And on the partial, I don't know where to draw the line.
Like the cocky bull?
Yes. It's not a problem now. Maggie Lo wishes to speak to us right now.
Yes, thank you. I'm looking at this nonconforming sites and I, and I gather because he was just mentioning, we're talking about already existing businesses, I guess, that are in a state of deterioration. But you know, one of the things I struggle with here in the city of, I know you guys can hear me, I don't need to be on top of that. Oh, okay. One of the things that bothers me is, is, and it, and I'm just going to go back just a little bit on this meeting, is we have people that, that have nothing vested other than money in, in this county and in this city. They come up, I've been sitting here, this is the first planning commission meeting I've been to, I guarantee you I'll be tomorrow, but I'm distressed because we have people coming here that have presented tonight that have a financial agenda or there's something, they're, they're not vested, they are not vested citizens of this city, much less of the county of San Bernardino, such as myself, since 1976, when I landed here. And I'm, and I hear a lot of politically correct and flowery language, but when you get down to the end of the day, it's really, and when I look at, when I look at this item number four about landscaping issues, you know, I think it's nice that, that we look as a city, and even as a whole high desert, aesthetically appealing, but I think we have to keep our mind focused on, on the big picture, which is drought. Drought is a big picture of what's going on with the whole state's economy. But the city even encouraged at one time, cash for grass. I pulled out 1,700 square feet of beautiful grass that I waited many years to have, and I'm from Northern California, so you know I like grass and trees more than anybody does. And, but, but we're encouraging people to put in landscaping so we look aesthetically appealing, but, but not plants or trees that are indigenous to this area. In other words, low, low maintenance.
We, we require drought tolerant plants.
Well, but I was going to go further with that about the landscaping is, and I don't know if this is the right timing of my comment, but one of the concerns I have as a person who's out and about every day, is some of these plants that are growing in, I'll just say, for example, Kmart, Walmart, whatever, any business, any of the big businesses here, where they have the planters and the big trees, the trees aren't what the problem are, but there is a safety issue inherent when you're driving around in a low-profile vehicle like I am, and you have bushes, bushes that are on the corners where you're turning, that are so high that you can't see if someone's coming around. I mean, it's kind of a, I know it's a, it's a small issue, but, but it really is a safety issue when we allow them to plant plants that we don't, we don't say, keep them groomed.
I don't think we allow that anymore, we don't allow that anymore.
We do try and look at that in landscape plans and make sure that there's moves to a ground cover on, at the end of aisles and things like that, but no, it, it can be missed or they can be wrong plants that they put on.
Yeah, most of mine I've seen lately are, seem to be more of the desert, a lot of airspace.
All plants have to be drought tolerant.
Or dead, I can't tell sometimes, but they're open.
And we don't allow trees at those, you know, where intersections are.
Right. Yeah, I'm just referencing that the shrubs that I see that I know are, are not, you know, they're, they were for before, but they're not being maintained at a low height for safety. So I don't know, it sounds to me like you guys know that we want to keep them low in the future and drought tolerant.
And if you see something like that, I'll call the code enforcement officer because they have to, to keep it down.
And I want to speak on the next item, but I'll go sit down until you guys are ready for that one.
Thank you.
So I made contradicting statements again, just now, on, on this one too, where it would be nice to, come on, let's play some catch-up here while in the, in the meantime, but then on the other hand, if there's not that many of them, you know, let's catch them when they ask for something, otherwise they're probably going to go away. And Palmdale Road isn't, around both of those buildings, isn't, isn't that pretty? The school is up there closer and that's, that's dialed in pretty well. The Silverado is, is not, not far from one of these.
Well, you work the Palmdale 395 back towards the city, and I think.
Yeah, you kind of hit these two and, and there's not much else.
Well, if you keep going down from there, next to House of Joy, used to be mobile home sales?
Yep.
Vacant. What do you do with that site when somebody wants to come in and put a new business in there, a used car dealer or something in there, and it looks terrible? It looks terrible. How far do we go? How, you know, is it worse to make it prolong, like you're saying, or is it better to let it go and somebody will redevelop the property? That's in between the Mitsubishi and the House of Joy, so when is the chance, what are the chances that in the near future that, that site's going to redevelop? So it's, it's, it's a tough one, and that's why.
I, I don't see Palmdale Road being redeveloped, like, for a number of years.
I, I kind of agree with, I agree with both of you. I think some areas are going to develop in the next cycle here, commercially, like Rob was saying, but then for the most, the major part of it, I agree, is probably, it's going to be that way for a while.
Yeah, and I just kind of feel, like you brought that one up, that's a very good point, that to me is kind of like, this? To where, to where that's right in the middle of everything, and there it sits. But for something in my mind, and I, I may be way off base here, but when you see these older structures, kind of in an older outskirts, it's kind of like, coming that part of Palmdale Road, it's kind of like the Wild West, and here's these older stuff, but then when you get into town, when you start hitting the car dealers and, you know, the utilities are undergrounded and those types of things, and you hit that area and there's street landscaping, and then you've got one right there, it's a sore thumb.
Yep.
How do you, how do you pick those out?
I guess what we're looking for is some direction, are you okay with us starting a review of the ordinances to come back with potential? Sounds like we probably need another, like, new business item or something with a, with some potential language or something?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see that.
Agreed.
And, and I also, as, as normal, I like to see how other cities handle that kind of thing. I mean, is there some, I'm always thinking, when the, when we hit hard items like this, there's got to be some magic that some other city hit upon.
All right, we'll look.
There's usually not, but I'd like to see, even just locally, how do they do it?
Sure.
Do you have what you need?
Yep.
Agenda item number five, and Maggie Lo wishes to speak to this item too.
And just to give you a preliminary, we talked a little bit in the, so I won't say much, but in the pre-meeting, but it just seems like it's, and Maggie actually was one of the people who spoke at the council meetings previously about this, which is why I always bring it back to you, because it does seem to be a regular, continue, ongoing thing at the council meetings that residents complain about yard sale signs. So I know we talked about it about a year ago, but I think we need to look at it again, something's not working here because we still get a lot of complaints and spend a lot of time on, on yard sales.
Yes, and to that end, just so you know, it's not just a summertime thing. I have, I took signs down just this past weekend. I have my own little defined area and I'm out cruising, 6:30, 7:30 in the morning, and I'm ripping them down as fast as they are putting them up. And some of those signs are so big, I can't even get them in the trunk of my car, I mean, enclosed the, closed the trunk. I took pictures just yesterday of the three I got. And, and not only is it a matter of, it's a violation of municipal ordinance to post them to the city signs, that includes lamp posts, utility lines, et cetera. It's a disgusting sight. I live in Sunset Ridge, a once lovely, beautiful, quiet community, no longer, that's days past. But all the signs over there, tape, there's some kind of tape out there that, let me tell you, when the heat gets it, it melds into the metal and/or the cement lamp, streetlights, and it's, you cannot get it off. And I'm, I'm, I guess the concern that I have is simply this, is this is only my opinion, and I offer it humbly, but I do offer it with, with good knowledge. We have, we have a problem with the people that are coming to live in Victorville. And you can ordinance people to death, and you can police them to death, and you can regulate them. to death, and you can regulate them to death. But until you make it a community that is not gonna tolerate certain kinds of inappropriate, unacceptable, or uncivil behavior, and, and not to mention just a lack of common sense, I think anybody with any degree of common sense would know, you don't post a sign that square over your 20 mile an hour speed sign on Sycamore. That's what I came home to the day I returned home from Northern California on vacation. I'm driving down Sycamore, and somebody had put these huge cardboard signs. Let me tell you what's put that individual person to a stop. It wasn't code enforcement, it wasn't getting an infraction citation. It's when I had a deputy from the Victorville PD show up at that gentleman's door, after I politely asked him during the day, would you please mind taking that down? I'm asking you nicely. And he was a renter. So when my deputy friend showed up at his door at 10:30 that night and said, yo, handle it. The fact that the police had to show up at the door to get compliance on those kinds of minor things speaks directly to the quality, the caliber, and the character of the type of people that have moved, not only into Victorville, but into this whole high desert. There's no getting around that. So I don't know what the solution is on the yard sale signs. Mr. Borchardt and I did discuss some things. But, um, you know, I know we have a problem, and I don't know what the solution is. And I'm, I heard some potential solutions from Mr. Borchardt, but honestly, I don't like a lot of government interference in my life, so I don't really like to be overregulated and be told, do this, or you can't do that, or whatever. But most of us don't need to be. Some of us do need to be. And with regards to yard sale signs, if it was up to me, I like what Commissioner Kerth said, and I thought about this already with regards to yard sale signs, is see what other cities are do, do about it, how they handle it. But not in Sonoma, and not in San Diego, and Imperial County is like that presentation. Let's see what other communities within San Bernardino County do to handle it, if they're handling it all. And falling short of that, the only other potential permanent solution is just saying, we're not gonna allow that, period. No yard sales, no yard sale signs, nothing. And I mean, that would be, that's all I have on that.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Actually, the ordinance says that the only signs you're supposed to have for yard sale are on your property.
That would be acceptable, because it's your property. Let me go back to that one moment.
They also get a, a, a list of what the requirements are when they get their, their, their license for, for the days that they're going to have the yard sale.
These are people who aren't getting licensed, that's what I'm trying to get across. These are people who have moved up here who don't care.
Code enforcement will take care of it if, if people will complain, because that's, we can't police the world.
I agree, but you know what, nor can I, on a continuous basis. And I have, just so you'll know, Mr. Borchardt probably knows, I've emailed pictures of all the signs covering, I have a half acre lot, covering my driveway that I laid them out and took pictures. There's many, 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 many pictures that the council has that I've emailed them with the addresses that the people wrote on them. So they know, they know it's a problem.
Yeah, see, if they put the addresses on there, that's a, that's an easy hunt, boom.
Right, but the majority don't do that.
But a lot of them don't, they just put garage sale with an arrow, and you just.
Right, right.
It's there somewhere, and you see it eventually down the street.
Right, and I gotta be honest with you, the temptation, there's a temptation on my part, you know, to follow those signs to see what house they go to, and see that address and take note of that, of that address. But there's also the part of self-preservation, where I've already had a confrontation with a couple men, and I'm not gonna put myself in jeopardy because they don't like the fact that I'm telling on them, or I'm addressing that issue. Or, I'll tell you exactly what one of my neighbors said, two blocks away from me, very nice home, man a little bit older than me, and son mad because they saw me rip their little sign right off the stop sign at the corner of their property lot, rip it down, mad. And you know what they said to me? Let code enforcement come and take it down. Not me, not you, let code enforcement do it. And that's the problem we have up here, you already know, is they put them up, but they don't take them down. So we don't have accountability or responsibility. So, that's.
Uh, uh, you're out of order.
But, and, and that's another, and that's not, and that, and I'll be, I'll try and wrap it up for you real quickly. And I, and I'm appalled by the idea that people think it's okay, got a box at home right now, just from Saturday morning, that's this big, why they think that's okay to put it on the corner of Bear Valley and Cobalt, or Bear Valley and Topaz, and advertise their address or their yard sale sign, and that's not their property? And if nothing else, if it's not covered under any other kind of municipal ordinance, it is littering. Littering, I believe, is a $500 citation, I think. But, but it's littering. It's, it would be like them dropping the box on my half acre lot without my consent. That property, just because it's open, doesn't mean it's not privately owned. So, again, I, I go back to the beginning, which is, we have a mindset and a mentality of people that don't care, as long as they achieve their ultimate agenda. So thank you for hearing me out on that.
Thank you. We, but just for your information, one of the things that we've been going through for, for the last year is trying to get things like that cleaned up. We're not gonna do it overnight. We had a big influx all at once, and, and it doesn't, it's just one of those things that we have been dealing with for some time, and we decided to do something about it. But it won't, it's not going to happen overnight.
No, it's not gonna happen overnight, but you, you just hit the nail on the head, Commissioner, very simply this. We've had a big influx just recently. And then you have to stop and look at what we've attracted up, what's come up here just recently. And these are the people who don't have regard for that old adage, when in Rome, do as Romans do. They, they're just.
Thank you very much, we have to move on.
So just to point out, on the la, under the page of the pickup truck with the yard sale signs in the back, there are the options that we talked about before. Just something to think about, not looking for any direction on this one, uh, tonight, unless you're ready to give it, but, uh, think about it maybe, and what we will do is, same as the nonconforming sites, we'll look at what other cities are doing, and if they have any other ordinances, um, you know.
I, I think that that would be helpful. We, we also could increase the price, and, and we issue a sign that they, we issue a sign that is blank, that can only be put on their property. Then the enforcement officer would know right away whether or not they were licensed.
That's not a bad idea, but like she said, I think so many of them are, just people don't even bother coming in to get a permit, so.
Yeah, that's over. But the biggest, the other thing here isn't that we're dealing with, you know, how do we handle this blight? Um, there's another comment in the staff report that says, so between development, the development clerk, the cashier, and the code enforcement officer, we are actually losing money taking in $5 on garage sales.
Yes.
So we're actually losing money on this deal. So we're losing both ways.
And that's, yeah, that's, Maggie suggested a $100 fine for anybody putting a sign up anywhere, you know, outside of where they're supposed to.
Oh, that would get their attention. Uh-uh, you're out of line, out of order. Well, uh, you have your direction that we want, uh, uh, other cities, um, information on that.
And I would be curious too, if, um, I don't know, if you go just a little bit deeper, but, um, you know, if people, people don't comply and come in and get a license, I mean, they say, hey, Friday, we're having a garage sale, just go for it, you know? They always tell the kids, run out there and put the sign out on the corner, otherwise they'll never find us. Right, okay, that's legitimate, it's, it's illegal, and it's ugly, but it's legitimate. Um, one of the other things, uh, some small towns have done that I saw was, if you came in to get a permit, you got information, and you got to be put on the holy grail garage sale list through the city of Victorville. Cause that's how my wife always was, she was looking, how do I find all these grouch, I just wanna randomly drive, you know? So if there's a benefit of some sort, like if another city was doing that, maybe that could help a little bit, I don't know.
Bob, we are, we're actually working on that right now. We're looking at having the application put an ad, like you would do in the Penny Saver or the Daily Press, put it on the city website, and also put it onto the city map, uh, where you click on it on Friday, and you can see every yard sale.
It's kinda interactive, so you can go in your, within your neighborhood, like if I live on this part of town, I can go map my little route, and I know people do that. And where, the small town I was from, my, my, we would go out, my wife would go out with her mom, to the garage sales, they actually, the town was so small, they had, everyone took their signs with their address on it, and put it on one corner in the little town there in Oregon. So all you did was drive to that one corner, and you had 30, 40 garage sales that you would write down and go around the city.
We, we talked about that last time, if you remember.
But we're still spread out.
If you remember, we talked about that, because I think Wrightwood does the same thing, where it's yard sale day or, or something, and everybody in the city can have a yard sale on that day, and people come from 50 miles away. And I, we talked about that last time, establish, set dates when garage sales are allowed each year, whether four, whether six, whether 12, you know, once each month, then you know that everybody, you, we wouldn't even have to permit, cause everybody is allowed to have a yard sale on that day. If they wanna have one, they can have one. Anybody not having a yard, anybody having a yard sale on a different weekend would be illegal.
If they wanna be thrown on the database for that weekend, you know, maybe there's a fee for that, maybe, you know, maybe that's worth it for some people.
Things, ideas to keep in mind, think about it, and, uh, we'll be back.
Okay, agenda item number six.
Agenda item number six was an invitation to Fernando Peña from Cash America to come and speak. This, uh, item is part of the moratorium we have right now on these businesses, and it was an opportunity to provide more discussion and more opportunity. We didn't provide any more information, except for the map that you have in your agenda, just shows you the existing facilities that are permitted in the city, where they're at, and, um, uh, the city attorneys want us to provide open discussion on this item, so that we can't say that we were already prejudged or predetermined as to what we were gonna do with them. So it was an opportunity for Fernando to provide information.
Do you have any clues, is it gonna be on a city council agenda at the beginning of the year, for a potential extension?
Well, it'll be on, uh, no, actually, we're, I don't think so. I think we're hoping to come forward to the planning commission next month with a, a possible ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Proposed ordinance. Okay, any further discussion on that item? Agenda, item number seven is communications,